Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Mahalovich, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we approach city elections, it's appropriate to pause and acknowledge our many community volunteers. April, there'll be many opportunities for volunteerism. Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in. So let us pray for those citizens who have contributed to the betterment of our community by serving on our city commission's boards, committees, and ad hoc groups. We are humbled by your involvement in our city, and we, as a council, hope we were worthy of your community investment. In your name, let us pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome to the March 18th, 2019 city council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham?
Present.
Hensley?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three is their motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, we'd like to welcome and introduce Mr. Brad Van Lou, who is the new local 671 firefighters' union president. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself as the new union president. Started in January of this year. And to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been a fireman for nineteen and a half years with Jeff City and lived in Jeff City my whole life. Born here, raised here, went to St. Peters, then Elias. Only time away was really going to Mizzou, went and got a degree from there, and I came back to the area that I grew up in and really liked to live in. So I just wanted to introduce myself and would like to meet with all the council members, city administrator, and other department leaders to work together and make this city a great place to live in, like it has been for me since I was born, so.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming this evening and introducing yourself. And I'll see if council has any questions. And I have one. I know that the firefighters' local 671 does an annual golf tournament every year. You have some different organizations that you benefit?
Right. A lot of our dealings are with charities. We have a golf tournament coming up that all that money goes towards a scholarship for local area school graduates going into the public service or the public safety fields, such as fire, police, and detectives in that criminal law. So that's where that money will be donated. We also do a barbecue once a year that goes towards many different charities, including United Way and a lot of other area organizations, Salvation Army, and so.
Well, the barbecue is a big one. I'm glad you mentioned it. And as it gets closer, if you want to come and announce those events in the future, you're always welcome to come and let us know to spread the word on those events that you have that help out the community. Do we have any other council questions or comments? Okay, great. Well, thank you for taking the time, and we appreciate your work and all of our firefighters. And we have a wonderful fire department, and thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Item B, we'd like to recognize the March Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Mr. Maurice Burnley. We have Mr. Steve Kroll.
And I will ask Mr. Burnley to come forward, and Matt Marash, the Director of Public Works, and Mark Mayment, who oversees our Jeff Tran operations. So we're here to recognize Maurice Burnley, City of Jefferson Assistant Operations Manager with the Transit Public Works Department for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for March 2019. Some of the information paraphrased from Mr. Burnley's nomination include the following. Mr. Burnley has shown exemplary dedication over 26 years of service to the City of Jefferson. Mr. Burnley has an excellent attendance record in several capacities during his tenure with the city, and his work has been crucial to Jeff Tran's success. Mr. Burnley's calm and gentle demeanor helps put transit customers at ease. Mr. Burnley operates with a high level of professionalism and technical expertise. His depth and breadth of knowledge in transit operations is exceptional. Mr. Burnley has excellent customer service skills and is always happy to assist riders, citizens, or fellow employees. Mr. Burnley is easygoing, even-tempered. Nature makes him the type of person who can get along well with just about anyone. Mr. Burnley has an unparalleled ability to schedule handi-wheeled rides in a very efficient manner. This provides significant savings to the City of Jefferson and helps reduce fuel shortages, overtime, and customers' ride time. Mr. Burnley's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the City of Jefferson and the surrounding area are hereby recognized and greatly appreciated. So congratulations and thanks to Maurice Burnley, City of Jefferson Assistant Operations Manager with the Transit Public Works Department for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for March 2019. Maurice? Congratulations. Thank you so much for all of your work.
Congratulations.
Twenty-six years!
That's a big deal. That is fantastic. And thank you, Mr. Burnley, for your service and for taking care of everybody in our community as you're showing your exceptional customer service in transit. That's very important to us, and we want to recognize you this evening. I have a city coin and some gift certificates that I'd like to present to you. So. Get a picture.
Everybody needs a second, Ken?
Ken? Come on, Ken.
A little faster, Ken. You're slowing us down.
It's a live mic.
Public workers, they're bad ones as well. I'm gonna thank you all.
Item five, we have our public hearings. We'll start with item 5A, Bill 2018-35.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 3261 South Ten Mile Drive.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a standard resolution approving a special exemption permit. The permit requested is for a short-term rental for a room and for entire residence. The first property is at 3621 South Ten Mile Drive. Let me just try to get you oriented there. It is basically between Highway 50 and Country Club on South Ten Mile Drive. It's a rather large piece of property. The access is from the very north part. Most of it is zoned RS1, except for one little part down at the southeast part of the property, but the access and the property that is going to be possibly a short-term rental is the house at the north end of the property. This permit, as I said, is for a lodging room, which has a maximum of four guests, or the entire residence, which would have a maximum of five unrelated people or unlimited number of people that are related by blood or marriage. It has adequate parking, meets all the other requirements. We went through the public notice process, which involved advertising, posting the property with a sign, and notifying neighbors within 185 feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to approve eight to zero on staff's recommendation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay. And I'll go over the outline of how the public hearing process will work. We will start with the applicant to open our public hearing, and the applicant can have 10 minutes, followed by a spokesperson for the opposition can have 10 minutes. Then at that point, we will alternate. If anyone's here that would like to speak, they would be allowed five minutes to speak, and we usually alternate both sides. And then, at the very end of the hearing, the applicant would have five minutes if desired for rebuttal. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the 3261 South Ten Mile Drive and invite the applicant to come forward if they are interested.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. And as you said, it is 3261. The display said 3621, but it is 3261 South Ten Mile Drive.
Okay.
And it's pretty cut and dry. We're seeking a special exemption to operate a short-term rental. Everything's in the application. There's really not much else to tell. It is off-street parking. We're 150 feet from the street with plenty of parking. Never be an issue. We're just off Country Club, so traffic is not going to be an issue for, you know, it's like we're at the end of a cul-de-sac, and we'll be increasing traffic in the neighborhood. That's not a problem, so. That's all I've got. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, any questions?
I'm Mike Rhino. I'm the applicant, so.
Okay, wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Rhino.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. And then, at this time, we would invite, if there's a spokesperson or anyone on the opposition to come forward. They're welcome to at this time. Okay. And is there anyone else that would like to speak on this bill? And I guess with that, we probably don't need a follow-up unless council desires. Alright, so with that, I will close the public hearing portion of this bill, and we will take up Bill 2018-35.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 3261 South Ten Mile Drive.
Alright, we'll take up any council discussion or deliberation on the bill. Councilman Mahalovich?
Under the checklist, item one, the use of the property is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance related to short-term rentals. It says the property has the capability to meet the requirements. Does that mean that they're going to be doing something? I don't understand that statement.
I'm not sure of the specifics of that wording either. I'm sorry.
Okay. You know where I'm looking at?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Very good. I just was curious.
Any other council deliberation? And then, Mr. Sanders, you have the address corrected to, I know, the 3261, I believe.
Yes, that was my mistake. And may I add a comment to Mr. Mahalovich's question?
Yes.
It may have to do with some of the fire or building codes, maybe a smoke alarm or something like that, something minor, I'm sure.
Thank you. Any further deliberation?
Just have a question.
Councilman Graham?
Did anyone speak against us at the planning and zoning meeting?
No, sir, not at this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, saying none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Alright, at this time, we'll take up item B, which is, oh, you know, did I get a motion in second for that? Did I skip that step? Did I, Mr. Mullman?
We're good.
Because that was a resolution, not a bill.
I read that as the council approving that, so.
Okay, so do we need an official?
No.
Okay. Will we for the next one? Usually, these are bills, and so I'm, but it's a resolution. Okay, we'll do that for the next one.
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, so we have item B, RS 2018-36.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed at 2059 Hastings Road.
Alright, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request at 2059 Hastings Road. I want to make that clear. My mistake before. The property is, get through here real quick. It is basically out there on the western edge of Covington Gardens. You can see the Highway C to the left. Up to the upper east is County Park Road, Fairground Road to the north. There's a little black square there, bottom center of your screen. That's where the property's located. I believe it is an RS3 zoning currently. It's the one there on the corner. This request is a little different. This is actually for a short-term rental as a single lodging room, not the entire residence, and that means they're only allowed a maximum of four people to rent the facility at one time. We did go through the public involvement process by notifying the neighbors, advertising it in the newspaper, and posting a sign. We did receive a public comment at the planning and zoning meeting. Approximately eight people spoke, one person for, seven against, and we also received some correspondence in about that same ratio for communications against the special exception permit and one for. Since then, in your packet is included the additional correspondence, I believe a petition, and also a couple of letters in support of it in your packet there. Staff made the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission based on the standards in city code. We recommended a motion to approve. The Planning and Zoning Commission, seven to one, made a motion to recommend approval to the city council, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on this.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, with that, we will follow the same procedure for this public hearing, so I will, at this time, open the public hearing for Resolution 2018-36, which is the 2059 Hastings Road. So we would invite the applicant forward at this time, and they would have 10 minutes. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Judy Bryant.
You can pull that down if you need to.
Okay. From 2059 Hastings Road, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65109. Mayor Turgon, council members, city clerk, and city administrator. My husband Danny and I are requesting a special exemption for a short-term rental. Many may be speculating how short-term rental will be handled in our home. Hordes of people around and many cars parked all over the place. In the next few minutes, I hope I can portray reality of how it would be handled in our home. We didn't wake up one day and decide we wanted to own a short-term rental. We've wanted to do this for over 20 years, when we first stayed in a bed and breakfast. We love hostessing in our home and meeting new people. Our youngest daughter just started college in the fall, so we are empty nesters. We'll always be present in our home upstairs when our basement is being rented. We have a 900-square-foot basement with one bedroom with a king-size bed, full bathroom, kitchenette, and a living room area complete with internet and cable. The area can be accessed by the outside entrance or through our garage. If we receive your approval, we will be putting up a privacy fence at the edge of our patio and a ring security system to ease any neighbor's concerns. We have a 50-foot, two-lane driveway, plus two parking areas in our garage. To give you perspective on how many cars that could fit in our driveway, we have a mid-size car, and it's approximately 12 feet long. Per the rules for a short-term rental with one bedroom, we're allowed up to four renters. They will consist of one group, not two individual groups. I seriously can't even imagine it being any more than two cars, and the majority of the time, one car. If they are comfortable parking in our garage, we'll let them do so. They would be part of our home. I can't imagine anyone even realizing anything is going on at our house. Part of our house rules will be no alcohol and quiet hours. My husband goes to bed early and gets up early, and we aren't going to jeopardize his job at Quaker Windows because the individuals renting are having a party. No pets initially. I say initially because there may be special circumstances for different individuals that would allow them to have to have a pet with them. Here's a brief timeline of the research before and during our decision to apply for a short-term rental. On January 2nd, 2019, we contacted one of our neighbors whom were in understanding what a short-term rental was. They came over to our home that evening, and we explained. The next day, on January 3rd, 2019, we brought it upon ourselves to compose a letter and sent it to the neighbors who were 185 feet from our home to explain what we were considering at that time. We heard from one neighbor that was in favor. One week later, on January 10th, 2019, we attended a planning and zoning hearing. The next day, January 11th, 2019, one day after we attended the hearing, we filled out the application and paid the $500. The evening after we had applied, the neighbor that had visited our home sent us a text and said they were not in favor. When the sign was put up in our yard, announcing the zoning hearing, many comments were put on our Next Door app. We respectfully and professionally explained our plan. We included our phone numbers and addresses and invited all with questions to stop by or text our home. Who does that to a couple hundred people? When we put our information on the Next Door app, a couple individuals contacted me personally. One getting married at the end of May and would like to rent it if it were approved for his mother or some of his family members because it would be much nicer to have them around the corner than in a hotel. From the time the sign was put up in our yard until now, today, no one that's against this short-term rental has stopped by, called us, or contacted us. One person stopped by one day because she thought perhaps we were going to put up a department building. Once I explained it to her, showed her the basement, she was very much in favor and thought maybe she lives about a half a block away, that perhaps when her grandpa visits, that he could stay at our house rather than there, or rather than in a hotel. We then set up a meeting with one other lady that lives about a block away. She met us, saw our home, saw our basement. She too was in favor. She's here tonight, and she did send a letter in favor in your packet. And I just need to stress, not one of those people that are against it have ever contacted us to know our details and the rules that we're going to have in our home, except for the people that didn't understand the short-term rental. They came over, but that was all prior to the sign and everything else being handled. We need to address a couple other concerns individuals might have. Within the 185 feet around our home, there are four full-time rental homes. So 185 in our neighborhood is about three houses on each side of our house and the equal distance across from our house. So in those few houses, there's four full-time rentals. So the neighborhood is very familiar with rentals. While they aren't a concern of ours, if they keep up their property where they live, they could be an issue because unlike ours, the owners aren't present. We will always be present when ours is rented. Some think that all we're going to rent to is sex offenders and felons. So in spite of not wanting to address that, I will address it. It's public access. Our neighborhood isn't free of them either. A registered sex offender, I can see from my home, and one lives just down the street on Hastings. It's public knowledge. Anybody can look that up. The world has changed, and you have to be careful no matter where you live or travel. It's our home. We're not going to add to that fear with us living there. When you rent with Airbnb, they'll check your driver's license and run a check on the individual. In addition, we will do background checks that, depending on which state you come from, we could use case.net here, paid sites, social media, and county public access sites. In a previous job that I held for a transit company, that was my job, to look up the backgrounds of all the people that applied for driver's positions. If they had a background, they didn't get hired. Property value. I'll add that the full-time rentals would be more of a concern than our short-term rental. I've read many articles that state the fact that if you have improved your home, to have a short-term rental is only going to add to the value of your home and help the comps in the homes in your area. Something else we have passion for is new individuals interviewing in the area and welcoming and showing them around the city. We were that couple in the past and found it hard to find somewhere more comfortable than a hotel to stay temporarily without signing up for a lease. I'll leave you with one point close to my heart. I'm a cancer survivor. I say this not for pity, but because I volunteered and been a part of many groups, but one way that I can help to give back is to offer a clean, germ-free area for someone who is going through treatment and pamper them for less than a hotel and much more personable. Whether someone lives in Jefferson City or some other cities, you always need a change of scenery when you're going through treatment. We can offer that in our home. We ask you to approve our special exemption for a short-term rental, not because we only want to add a business, but because this is where our heart is, and we can proudly add to the Jefferson City experience in a positive way and watch it flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Alright, thank you. Oh, Councilman Fitzwater?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for your comments. Do you have a feel for how many nights a year that a typical home like this would rent for? Do you have any feel at all, or it's just?
I don't. We've talked, I talked to one individual that wasn't in the downtown area that you approved, and he told us theirs was rented 20 out of 30 nights a week, or a month. I don't know. You know, we're not downtown, and we don't have this beautiful view by the water, so ours are going to be more people coming in town for wedding reunions, maybe two sisters on a shopping trip somewhere. You know, it's not going to be people that want to just sit outside for the scenery.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, next, if we have a spokesperson for the opposition? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, city administrator. My name is Greg Ween. I live 2112 Hastings Road, which is probably 186 feet from this house, since I didn't get a letter. First of all, I don't know why I'm first. I guess I just got unlucky. This is more of a job for my daughter, Angelice. She'd be able to handle this stuff better than I could. But mainly, I'm not anti-BMB or short-term rental. I've used one myself. We just feel, as a group, and as a group, I mean those who have signed the petition that you have been supplied with, and I have additional petition signers as well. Thirteen other households have signed it since you received that one. In fact, we had about 90% of the people we talked to were in opposition of having the home where it is located. And not that it's an anti-BMB factor, it's more of a, in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a single family. It was designated that way. We really would like to keep it that way, in that only families who live there with their children or retired like me can experience it the way we moved into it. I've been there 10 years, other people longer, others shorter.
So ours are going to be more people coming in town for wedding, reunions, maybe two sisters on a shopping trip somewhere, you know, it's not going to be people that want to just sit outside for the scenery.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, if we have a spokesperson or the opposition? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, City Administrator. My name is Greg Ween. I live 2112 Hastings Road, which is probably 186 feet from this house since I didn't get a letter. First of all, I don't know why I'm first. I guess I just got unlucky. This is more of a job for my, like my daughter Angela, she'd be able to handle this stuff better than I could. But mainly, I'm not anti-BMB or short-term rental. I've used one myself. We just feel as a group, and as a group, I mean those who have signed the petition that you have been supplied with, and I have additional petition signers as well, 13 other households have signed it since you received that one. In fact, we had about 90% of the people we talked to were in opposition of having the home where it is located. And not that it's an anti-BMB factor, it's more of a, in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a single-family, it was designated that way. We really would like to keep it that way and that only families who live there with their children or retired like me can experience it the way we moved into it. I've been there 10 years, other people longer, others shorter. And we've really enjoyed Covington Gardens as it stands. We feel like a building or a short-term rental like this one may expand to be more than one, it may end up seeing many more. We have no idea as far as that's concerned. To address the previous comments, we, personally, I didn't go to the house because I saw the comments on Nextdoor. They answered all my questions. I didn't feel like I needed to see inside of a house to make an evaluation one way or the other. Maybe other people felt the same way, I don't know. That was just my, the way I approached it. Most of the individuals who I talked to and Bruce, the other gentleman who did all of the polling, the comments we got back were similar to what I just said. Some of had been to BMBs or other types of short-term rental and we're not against them per se, just not in Covington Gardens. We didn't feel it was the right place. They belong in some places, but not our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Councilwoman Ward?
Oh, sorry. I started to walk away.
That's fine. Thank you for your comments. When you were sending the petition around, I'm sorry.
Oh, we walked it around. Bruce and I walked every house.
Did you have the plans? Were the plans shared with everybody as they decided whether they wanted to?
Yes. In fact, we were given, the way we both presented it was, you know, I guess, we're biased in the fact, the way we wanted to approach it, but we tried to be very fair, saying, not that you have to sign it or here's what we know is happening, just based on what we know, that the short-term rental is proposed in our neighborhood and we're looking for those who are in opposition of this. We realize that you may not be. You may be in favor of those, that's fine. And we did not encourage or strong-arm anybody to sign the petition, just to go with whatever they felt like they should do after we presented the situation to them. Am I answering your question?
Yes. Were they aware that it's going to be owner-occupied during?
Well, what, yes, they were. They were aware of that. And some of, in fact, we were even asked that question, are the owners going to be present? And it came up, when it came up, I said in the planning and zoning meeting, which I attended too, they addressed that, that they would be present. But it doesn't mean that the option is not also available for them not to be. I mean, I think that's the way it's written, a single room or option. I didn't say that to the people who I talked to, but my concern is that too. Will it end up being a whole house? And if not theirs, will the next one be a whole house? Now, where do we draw the line? Where do we say stop? This is enough short-term rentals in our neighborhood. We start with one, we go, you know where that, you know where I'm going, but that's how we felt. But that was not, we did say that they had the basement available, finished, they mentioned it was finished. I don't know if they did it or somebody else did it, but it was available for the one room. And nobody asked me how many people, but, you know, it never came up. That was really never a concern of them. At least that was the impression I got. No one mentioned it anyway.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And then at this time, we'll, the rest of the remaining speakers can have five minutes each to speak and we will alternate. And at five minutes, I will let everybody know, and that's my least favorite thing to do. So I always feel rude interrupting, but I will, just so we can get through everyone. So is, let's see, pro-con, so is anyone in favor that would like to come forward? Yes, and you're welcome to come forward and just state your name. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sandy Meyer. I reside at 4063 Westminster Drive, which is about one block away from the residence in question. I am here tonight on behalf of my neighbors, Danny and Judy Bryant, at 2059 Hastings Road. I offer my full approval to their plans for opening a short-term rental at their home. I wrote a letter of support as well, which I emailed to City Clerk Emily Donaldson this morning. I hope you are able to review my letter. And I would just like to briefly recap the reasoning behind my advocacy for the official record. Firstly, I am a frequent traveler myself and have used Airbnb in the past. I would like to let you know that the Airbnb platform does require users to submit a copy of their driver's license before being approved for rental. I feel this is a good safety net for the community in which a short-term rental exists. Secondly, and perhaps the most important factor to realize, which has already been stated, but the homeowners will also be in the home during any potential short-term rentals. They will be there to supervise and take care of any issues that may arise in an immediate manner. I don't believe the same can be said for the full-time rental homes in our neighborhood. Right across the street is one and catty-cornered across the street, a different street. So there are some of those in the surrounding area. I feel any parking concerns that may have been raised should be considered nonexistent. The Bryant's have an extremely long driveway. For those who may be concerned about property values decreasing, my response would be that the residence in question is completely updated and immaculate. The outside has a very neat and cared-for appearance, and I believe the Bryant's have the best of intentions to make sure their property remains in excellent condition. In closing, I feel the short-term rental approval would be beneficial for both tourism and commerce in the city of Jefferson. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to come forward and speak, we'll try to alternate both sides. Welcome. And if you'd just state your name.
My name's Bruce Chin. I live at 2124 Hastings Road. And I read the newspaper religiously every day, front to back, and I have never seen anything posted in the paper regarding information about this proposed short-term rental that the Bryant's are applying for. I have, we have lived in our home since last August. My wife and I, we loved the home. We instantly fell in love with the neighborhood. And we would have never dreamed that a short-term rental would be approved in our subdivision. We're an exclusive, single-family residential neighborhood. In response to this lesson that spoke, I personally circulated our petition on Westminster Street, the one, the street she lives on. And of everybody that answered their door, one lady said due to her job, she couldn't sign the petition. But everyone else that answered their door did sign the petition opposing the short-term rental. And one other thing I'd like to bring up is that I was here the night that you voted to deny the short-term rental on Timber Trails. And it was unanimous vote. Your mayor said if you were allowed to vote that night, you would have voted in favor of denying that request. Well, by circulating the petition, I feel we have much, much broader support from the 51 or so people that signed this petition than the people did on Timber Trails. There were a handful of people or so here that stood up that were opposed to the Timber Trail rental. We had 50, 51 signatures of people. And these signatures came from people that lived on Newcastle, which is the street that runs along one side of the Bryant's home. Westminster would be the next home south that ran parallel, and also the street behind the Bryant's. And, you know, of all the area we covered, we had, I think, four people that didn't want to sign it because they had nothing against a short-term rental going in our subdivision. Only four. We had 51 that were opposed to it. That tells me we have broad support. And one other thing I want to address is that I used to be in residential retail business in Jeff City, and we rented homes that we owned, apartments, so on and so forth. And I can assure the council that if I was to rent a $200,000 home to somebody, I would do some serious vetting before I would sign a year-long lease with anybody to ensure that my home was going to be taken care of and these people were going to pay the rent on time. And as far as sex offenders, pedophiles staying in short-term rentals, granted, registered pedophiles are known, but there are many more out there that are pedophiles that aren't, haven't been found out about, haven't been prosecuted, that could stay in our neighborhood. And I'm not, I know you're busy tonight, so I'm just going to close with one thing. I'd just like each of you to put yourselves in our place. How would you like to have a short-term rental next door to you? How would you feel with your children, grandchildren, living next door to an unvetted human being you know nothing about? And all it takes is somebody with $500 in the bank and we go through this process. I mean, these could pop up anywhere. So with that, I'm just going to say that I pray this afternoon that tomorrow morning's headline will read, "City Council denies Covent Garden short-term rental."
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Welcome, if you could just state your name. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Shelley Land, and I actually live across the street from the Bryant's. And I submitted a letter, so you probably have that letter as well, so I don't need to go through it. But one of the things that I wanted to talk about and some of the points that I wanted to bring up is, I understand the concerns both for and against, and I understand concerns when it comes to renting property that you may or may not know the individuals that you will be renting to. I think the differences in what the Bryant's are trying to explain tonight is that they're going to do everything possible by running backgrounds and ensuring the safety and integrity of Coventry Gardens by being on the property. And I think when we don't allow people an opportunity to, you know, stretch their financial means doing, you know, rental, whether it's short-term or not, I think we are prejudging a situation that has yet to happen. I understand that they've taken all the steps to try and make people aware of this situation. I actually did receive a letter from them announcing that this was something that they wanted to do. I never was asked about a petition or approached by anybody else in the neighborhood. So I respected the fact that they approached me, they explained this to me. I didn't find a problem with it because I don't have a problem to be concerned with until there may be a problem. And I would hope that that's not going to happen if they ensure that there's safeguards put in place. I certainly want to live in a neighborhood where there's safeguards, there's respect for each other, and the community is something that we want our kids to grow up in. And I've not seen that they've demonstrated any sort of behavior to this. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater.
Hi. Thanks for being here. How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
A little over four years.
Have you, were you there when any of the homes converted from owner-occupied to rental?
I actually rent the home across the street from them.
Were the neighbors notified when you converted that from?
I'm not the owner of the home. I rent. I'm actually a renter across the street.
But when you came in to rent that house, was the neighborhood notified that you were going to be the new renter?
I have no idea how the owner handled it.
As I drove around out there, there were a few houses for sale. Did property in that area move fairly quickly?
Mm-hmm. It does.
So real estate there is sought after for our community?
It seems pretty good. I've not seen any problems out there.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone like to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Councilmembers, Administrator, I'm Gary Barnhart. I live at 4023 Newcastle. Now, I've lived there for 10 years and I know the neighborhood well. My house is one of the first five that were on that whole stretch. And those homes are either the new, the section in behind it is absolutely new homes and they are newer homes. Now, when everyone bought their homes, including the Bryant's, they accepted the fact that this was residential housing. What they're wanting to put in is nothing short but a mini hotel. That is not what this is zoned for. There are other areas that they can have transient people come in and out. There's motels, restaurants, there's other areas. This is not compatible with this area. Now, the thing is, is these are businesses and are to be treated as such. Now, Bryant's said they sent out letters. Like some of the others, no one came to talk to me. And they said they put stuff out on their webpage or on that neighborhood thing, but they've never come around to talk to anybody and talked about it. You know, at least several people have taken the petition around to talk to people in opposition of it. So if you go online, you can see a lot of the problems that other cities are having. Is the problem with the noise and the trash and the parking? Now, they said they could use their garage, he's got a Harley and a car in the garage. It's going to be on the driveway, which is fine, but there's already a parking problem with the rentals next to them. Sometimes you can't even get down the street, you know, without, two cars can't pass. Now, the thing too is they're talking, they're trying to compare, and this was brought up at the meeting in February 14th, that they're talking about, you know, the long-term rentals. Well, short terms are different than long terms. You've got one person who signs a contract, so you can kind of get to know or watch that person. You know, with this, it's transient. There's going to be people in and out, and there's nothing restricting how many times this is going to be rented through the year, or for how long. And there's nobody that's going to be able to watch this. So, you know, we have to take their word that everything's up and up. Well, you know, no offense, but considering what they've already said, that they've loved the neighborhood and they've talked to the people, no one's talked to me or some of the others, so I already doubt their credibility. No offense, but... So the other thing is too, is some of the homes in some of the areas we're concerned about that are long-term are being converted over to short terms. So where they brought up the issue that they have a concern about one starting and maybe others, that's been a problem if you look at some of the other cities. So we don't want there to be all of a sudden a large glut of short-term rentals, plus too, that's had an effect on some of the housing market in some of the other areas. Now, the other thing too is, they said how it's, you know, they're working on their house and it's going to prove the value. Well, no offense, not a lot of people, now, some of these people are rentals that live near them, but most of the others, we own our homes. We love our homes. We've been there for 10 years or longer, some shorter, but, and we do our best to try to keep this a nice neighborhood. Now, the thing is, is nobody wants to live next to one. So if you go to sell it, it's going to take a lot longer, and when I talk to the realtor, their concern is like ours, is that the property values are going to drop. Well, if they do, that means less for the home, and no offense for the city, that means less real estate tax and less personal property tax because the people that are going to end up buying it at some point are not going to be paying as much for the homes. And that's something you all need to think about because you're going to end up with another Westview Heights. And we want our neighborhood safe and we want it clean and we want it neat. We don't want it to be like the other neighborhood, and we're trying hard to keep it that way. So with that, I guess my other point is, they're doing this to make a dollar. And she's making the intention sound good, and that's fine, but the whole point is, they bought the house, the question's whether they could really afford it, and they're trying to make a buck. Okay, I can understand that, but why should the rest of the neighborhood pay and have to deal with this because of that? That's on them, not the rest of the neighborhood. So we do have issues with that, and I was one of the members, I did sign the petition, I'm against it. I just don't think it's compatible with the neighborhood. You know, there are other areas that are set up for this already. We don't need it in our area, especially amongst all the new homes. So with that, you know, councilmembers, city administrator, I appreciate your time tonight and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone then that would like to speak in favor? Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me. My name's Nick Swoboda. I live at 2053 Hastings, so I'm right next door to the Bryant's there in the house in question. My wife, Ashley and I, we have our two-year-old son. We are in favor of this. We have actually been involved, or not involved, but using short-term rentals for quite a while. I travel a lot for my job in the military, and I work here at the state headquarters, and we also have a lot of folks that come in town here to train with us. And it's of our opinion that this would And it's of our opinion that this would benefit them a lot. They have the opportunity to apply for jobs to work here. As people come into state headquarters to train, those people that are working out, they're good Missourians, hard-workingers out in Kansas City, St. Louis, all over the place in Missouri, get to see what a true Jefferson City neighborhood looks like. I think those are the people who are primarily gonna be coming in and renting, and I, my hope is that we get good, hard-working citizens that like our neighborhood and they want to move to Covington Garden and live with us, because that's the type of people that we want there, and of course, you know, that's, that's who we want to live around us. I love our neighborhood too. The other thing I want to say is, I've actually been very satisfied with the Bryant's and how they've engaged us throughout this process. We were surprised to get the letter from them initially. We thought, we welcomed that, and we thought it was very transparent. Then, we engaged them, we had some questions for them, and they were able to walk us through and answer any questions we had, and we were very satisfied with that whole process. I think that this, I also appreciate the council taking this on and the way the city handles this all together, because we know that just because this one is approved, doesn't mean that Carblanc, boom, everyone's gonna be approved for a short-term rental lease agreement in Covington Gardens or anywhere else. Everyone has to go through the process, everyone has to be vetted. So, we appreciate that. And other than that, I have nothing further. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Yes, hi. My name is Christian Oros, and thank you council and mayor for allowing us to speak on this matter. Me and my wife live at 4070 Newcastle Lane, which is the property right next to this property, and we very much opposed to the proposal, of course, and we have a few points to make about that. Covington Gardens is a dense, populated area with kids, a lot of children, use bicycles, play. We even have, our backyard is very large, so we invite neighbors' kids to play. Our boy, five-year-old, is gonna start school soon, and I'm gonna, I'm sure he's gonna make a lot of friends, he's very social. And so we have them coming by and playing. There's a school bus stop right in front of this property for the short-term rental, so that would be a concern. But mainly, one thing I thought about is what if, and I'm not even gonna ask you to imagine this, but somebody coming from outside of town, not really knowing the area, driving down the streets, and there's a lot of valleys and up and down the streets, and kids playing with bicycles and riding, and what if one of those cars hits these kids? And this never guaranteed, we don't know, that obviously probably never might happen, but if it does, then we're kind of concerned about that. A second point to be made, we, it's kind of about our privacy, me and my wife living right next door, and the entrance to the basement room for lodging is facing our deck, and we spend a lot of time on our cover deck and outside in the backyard. So we're concerned about the privacy, and yes, we realize the houses are very close, and we bought the house without seeing that, and if we want too much privacy, then probably we should be in an area where the houses are like a one mile apart. But we're still kind of concerned about that. The owners of the property mentioned that they possibly might install a higher fence and whatnot, but the way our deck is in our property compared with theirs, that deck is very high. So that fence will have to be really tall to kind of cover any privacy issues. And lastly, I had another point, I'm sorry. A bit nervous, I'm sorry. It's mostly about the kids, and especially with the school bus stop. And that's it, I'm sorry. The one, actually, the last, one last thing was, yes, I understand that neighbors are promising to be home, but that's just a promise. How anybody's gonna check any of that? We just met, the new neighbors, and we just met, we didn't even get a chance to kind of build a certain trust relationship. Personally, I would feel better if I build a trust relationship with neighbors being there for, like us, a couple of years, or a year, or a few months even, and get to trust to see how they are. And so that's, you know, that where, that issue or that concern about them being home is just a promise, and with all due respect, you know, to them, it's hard for me to trust somebody I just met. I would like to take some time to get to know each other. And that'll be the last point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? And could you spell your last name?
Yes, O-R-O-S, Oros.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor? Or anyone that would like to speak at all on the bill? Well, hello there.
Hi there.
And welcome.
This is my son, Alexander. My name is DJ Remar. I live at 4010 Westminster, which is kind of the opposite corner of this house, and the only point that I really want to touch on is safety and security. You know, me having a almost three-year-old and another one on the way, you can only background-check people so much, you know, you use CaseNet and, you know, whatever else paid services are out there. You can only do that so much, you know, you really don't know who you're bringing into these places. You know, I've done Airbnb before, yes, and the first question I asked the lady that I rented with was, have you ever had any bad people? And, you know, she said, you know, I've had a couple. The number-one thing was, I said, you know, do you check these people? And of course, Airbnb, you have to do the driver's license, but you can't check everything about somebody. And, you know, my thought is, why do we have burglar alarms? You know, you don't not have a burglar alarm because, you know, you've never been burgled into, you know, you have one because you don't want it to happen to you. So, same with a fire alarm, you know, you don't have, you do not have them because you haven't ever had a fire. So it's like, it takes that one person, that one time that something bad happens, that really makes us a bad idea, and that's my concern. You know, my son doesn't go around the neighborhood by himself, but a lot of kids do. It just takes that one person to do something wrong, and that's what my big fear is. You know, if we bring this in here, does it open a door for other people to start bringing more and more in? And it would just make me really concerned to be around the neighborhood, you know, with that one person, that one bad person who didn't match who they were renting with, you know, something that was missed. That's my big concern. So that's the only point I want to hit on, and, you know, nothing, nothing personal, absolutely not personal. I made the original next-door post and asked about it, and that was my first thought, was security and safety, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Welcome, you can come up if you'd like to.
Hello. My name is Ladana Oros, and I live on 4070 Newcastle Lane, right next door to the Bryant's. To know me, you have to understand that my number-one thing in safety is for children. As a parent now, I haven't been able to be a parent for 20 years. We've waited. I have done work with children for over 10 years to fill my void. It has helped me tremendously. It's very hard for me to see something potentially happening to a child that I personally know at the corner of a bus stop. We don't have to supervise those kids now, but if this was approved and it was right there, I would have to be out there, have a five-year-old. I did, I was the one that contacted them right away. I contacted Mrs. Judy to speak to her about Airbnb, because I was only informed of Airbnb as home, like, the old-fashioned way, like bed and breakfast. I didn't know this existed. I'm 43, maybe I should be ashamed of not knowing, but I really didn't know. So I asked questions and I said my concerns. I've said personal stuff regarding my health, and my child is the most concerned to me, being so close. I have seen Covington Gardens over 16 years ago, and God willing, that I would have a child, that would be the place that I wanted to be. So when I was five months pregnant, we found this house. We don't plan to move. We don't want to move. My health will not allow me to move. My child is starting school. It's very hard, as a daycare provider that I was, and raising my own child, to not understand what's going on, because he is. So this has affected us personally as a family. I make friends with everyone. I welcome them first. I don't regret being the first one to meet them, because I would do anything to help them as new neighbors, as I have in the past for all the neighbors. That's how I am. I will not change. I, I don't know how much I have to explain, even to myself. If something were to happen and I was to see it or experience something, it would traumatize me, because it already traumatized me not being a parent for so long. I've had two hip replacements and a knee failing. I've expressed all this, and if I had known that she was a cancer survivor, I would have just lent a hand. I'm sorry that that happened to you. I wish it would have been communicated, as I communicated all of my stuff with her. The houses that are down the road are for sale. There's two houses down the road that are for sale. They haven't gone anywhere. I just want to feel at ease on my own space. And I want to make sure that my son can go outside, and I look at them, and I can't explain my whole 25 years of marriage in these minutes. I'm sorry. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening? So at this time, we would give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal for five minutes? Okay. Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will close the public hearing portion of Resolution 201836, and I will ask for a motion to approve 201836, so we can take this up for discussion. And is there counsel discussion deliberation questions? Councilman Hesse?
I just have a question for clarification from staff, real quick, and it gets brought up sometimes about other rental properties. And just so we're clear, anybody in a RS3-zoned area could have a home similar to this and enter into a lease agreement for a minimum of 30 days, correct? Without a requirement to come before the city for a permit, approval, or any change to their zoning classification, correct?
One month is the cutoff. They would be subject to a landlord registration?
Correct. And so, I guess sometimes we think of rentals in longer terms, six-month, 12-month leases, but we do permit a 30-day rental without any process, so similar to a short-term rental, without any notifications to the neighbors, any changes to the structure, any requirement of them filing an application, correct? None of that needs to take place?
Correct. They can do that 12 times a year.
Okay. And then, I guess I'll follow up, because parking was brought up. In a single-family home right now, as this property is owned, what is the maximum number of vehicles that are permitted to be at that property parked, I guess you could say?
I'm not sure if there's a maximum number of vehicles parked on, as long as it's on a hard surface such as a concrete driveway, they're not permitted to be parked on the street, so that may be a function of the size of the driveway.
Okay. If they did spill over to the street for parking, do we regulate how much street-frontage parking a home is permitted to take up?
Um, no.
No, because it's a public street. But there is a required rotation of vehicles, you can't park a car on a street and leave it there for 10 days.
I believe 72 hours is what you're asking for, yes.
And I guess Covington Gardens, as far as we know, it has some individuals that potentially live in that subdivision that are on the registry for sex offenders through the Highway Patrol, so I'm assuming that the neighborhood itself currently falls outside of the restricted zone that would exist in other portions of the community, are we?
I use the registry myself for my personal use, and I, I'm not sure what the requirements are to be notified. If it's a daycare, I think was the only thing at one time that they had to be within a certain distance away from. I don't know, Mr. Mulman might be able to clarify that.
No, I can't. I'm not familiar with those offhand. I haven't looked into this particular subject with any type of detail.
And then I guess my final, I guess it's not really a question, it's more of a comment at this point, is just that some of the concerns that get expressed would be true of any neighborhood, any area of the community about traffic. I mean, these are public streets that seemingly any individual could drive through, and if they're doing nothing to draw attention to themselves, you know, speeding, driving recklessly, causing a disturbance, then they could proceed, you know, unabated through a residential area that they are familiar or unfamiliar with. And so I get some of those concerns, but in my mind, you know, dangers at school crossings or kids playing in the streets exist regardless of whether or not there's a short-term rental in the basement of a home versus just the dynamics of a neighborhood that would be concerning for any turnover that exists. I myself live on a street that generates a lot of traffic. There's a lot of small children that play, a lot of kids that walk to and from school, and it's a constant concern for us and for me. You know, my mind doesn't necessarily go to the rental nature of the homes around me or what's existing, it's just making people familiar with the neighborhood that we live in. And so I think that concern is relevant regardless of where somebody lives, and it's a concern that's top of mind, and so I wouldn't want to necessarily associate anything happening as a result of a short-term rental in one particular property that would greatly impact that, any more than, you know, a new family moving in, a property becoming a rental property for a longer-term lease and those kinds of things. And so, I think we all share those concerns about neighborhood safety. I don't think of them in the context exclusively of a short-term rental as being the cause or contributing factor, as much as just, it's the dynamics of a neighborhood. At that moment, I'll pause and let my colleagues weigh in as well.
Councilman Mahalovich?
In regard to the previous special exemption permit before us, the applicant did not show that night, and I think that that was harmful to that permitting process, because I think some of us had some questions to ask. I appreciate the applicant's detail and within our time scope, and so this, we treat each one of these individually, but that was an extenuating circumstance of the last permit. The second thing was, seems like I attended the P&amp;Z, and there was a two-part question, I thought, whether or not they want to be at the, if they're going to be in the property, or they're going to be away from the property. And it seems to me that the applicant pulled the second part of that. Can you help me out with the?
Yes, sir. I believe the question was, the Planning and Zoning Chair asked regarding a lodging room versus renting out the whole residence. And the chairman asked the applicant if you would be willing to consider just having a lodging room, which provides for only four persons to rent it at a time, one room, four people total, as opposed to renting out the whole residence, which could allow five individuals related by marriage or blood, excuse me, five individuals, or if they're related by marriage and blood, it would be an unlimited number. And they were willing to reduce that. So that's why at the beginning of this case, I said this is for a lodging room only.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it was, it was made clear to me they pulled that that night, that other option, correct? The applicant? The, one testimony said they can spend as much time there as they wish, and we do know that it's 30 days or less for a short-term rental, right?
Yes, sir. And I don't know, and Mr. Mulman might be able to add to this, but I don't know what would prevent someone from renting out a short-term rental for 32 days. Because they certainly can do that right now without any special permission. So I think you can do both short-term and long-term rental.
Yeah, nothing would prevent someone from renting out the property for more than 30 days. It's just that if you're going to do it for less than 30 days, it's considered a short term, and this permit is required in this neighborhood. But if you were to do it for more than 30 days, then no permit would be required. So the short-term rental would largely be, sorry, irrelevant for a rental that's longer than 32 days. So the receiving of a short-term rental would not preclude a longer-term residential rental situation.
But if it were 31 days, then they would need to file the proper paperwork for that.
Yes, sir. If we knew about that, we would send them a letter to do so.
Councilman Graham?
I just have one comment for now, and I'm going to come back and say something here in a minute. So if someone can actually rent out their facility, or their home or whatever, they do not have to go through the special permit process, why would someone want to pay $500 to go through this process when they can just technically do it on their own? What ordinance did we pass that's different from what an owner can do now? Why pay $500 to go through something in which you can do it technically without having to go through this process?
Sure. The permit and the permitting fee associated with it allows for short-term rentals, so less than 30-day rentals. And so that is not available to homeowners unless they pay the application fee and get the permit approved by the city council.
And I think that's what Councilman Hesse was trying to allude to a while ago. I don't want to put words in your mouth. But was that you trying to allude to it earlier, in regards to the $500 fee?
No, what I was trying to allude to the fact is that this exact same situation, an owner zoned in an RS3 home could rent out their bedroom in the basement for 30 days right now already, without having to go through a process. My point is to say that you could already have potentially a turnover of 12 different renters throughout a year. And I guess that the difference would be a little bit that, really, it wouldn't have to be a minimum of 30 days necessarily, as much as they can only do it once per 30 days, correct? Or would it have to require a quote-unquote, or they could just call it a 30-day lease, but permit it for said nights? And so my point was, you could already have some turnover in renter in properties with the existing way that things are written. Does that make sense?
You wouldn't have to pay the $500.
Correct, but you would be maxed out at 12 renters a year.
So currently, you would be allowed to have theoretically 12 renters in a year. But what's before us tonight is there could be 12 renters in less than two weeks. So there could be theoretically 30 renters in 30 days. And I think that's really what this discussion is about, is, so really technically, they could open up their home for, you know, if they choose that route to do, 30 days or longer. And there would be no neighborhood input, or the city currently approves it. But I think what we have before us tonight is the fact that the neighborhood has overwhelmingly expressed concern with the frequency, and that the transient guests could be there for, in larger quantities throughout the year. So, you know, if they rented it every day, it could be 365 different people going through there other than just the 12 by our current ordinance. And I did want to thank Danny and Julie Bryant for coming. I feel that you all are very organized. I can tell from your testimony. I believe that you have good intentions. I really do. I appreciate the neighbors that came in support. It was mentioned about the other four full-time rented homes, but I think that is completely different from this, the long-term versus the short-term. And I won't get a vote tonight, although I could, depending on if it's a tie vote or not, we don't know that yet. But if it did come to me in a tie, I would vote against this. And the reason is, for many of the reasons that were already stated tonight, but one of them, the quote was, "How would you feel to have short-term rental next door?" And I'm a renter, so this is a different question, not really for me, but when I was an owner and owned my home, the question, "How would you feel to have a short-term rental right next door?" A lot of that is really not really up to us in our neighborhoods, and it's not up to me on my street, or any of us on our street. What it is, is it's up to those that do live in the neighborhood, and that's why it's so important that we are hearing, we are hearing both sides. But that's the decision, is that we are hearing how you feel to have that right next door, or within the vicinity, to have transient guests. And another thing that came up that said transient guests, that this is not compatible with this area, and that's what it is up for us to decide. And I do want each council member to vote, and that's what this deliberation is about, how they feel would be best for that neighborhood, and that's why it comes to us to make that subjective decision. This is not objective, they check all the boxes. But it is up to us to make that, truly whether it really is compatible, and whether the neighborhood embraces it for those reasons or not.
Further questions, comments? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I too appreciate the folks that have come out. I had an opportunity to spend some time last week and got a little tour of the area, and I appreciated kind of understanding what the folks that are in opposition to this proposal. Ms. Horace and I traded phone calls, we never did connect. I apologize, but I appreciate, I've read all the information that you've sent in, and others have sent in. Had a nice conversation with the Bryants. I think as I indicated at the last meeting, you know, I've gone through the planning and zoning, you know, come out with only one negative vote. I've tried to go through the materials. One of the speakers discussed other cities going through this, so I've tried to Google and take a look at what other cities have gone through, successes and struggles. Trying to look, and I know it's not a checklist process, but you know, when you take something out to community members and they meet the checklist, and we don't have objective things to judge against it, seems like it makes our job more difficult. One thing we did not talk about tonight is there are some fairly stringent revocation provisions within the code, so if folks don't live up to the terms of the agreement, what's been indicated, there's a process to revoke, should this go through. I think Councilman Mahalovich indicated that some of the frustration last time was the fact that the applicants did not show up. They did not come in, answer similar-type questions that we've asked tonight. So, I mean, I think we're all going to struggle with this vote. I think we need to do what we think is right for this community, for our city, for what we have put out there, saying these are our guidelines. Again, I appreciate all the folks that have been involved. You know, they've called, they've sent letters, we've talked to some, we've gotten written materials from some. It's been a good interchange. Hopefully, whatever we end up doing tonight, the community comes back together and this works. If it doesn't work, then we find out, we go through the revocation, and you know, that's that. If it isn't approved, you know, I hope it'll be the same, that the community will come together and there'll be other opportunities. Thanks to all that have been involved and have educated us, because that's what we need, is folks in the community talking to us about real needs and real concerns.
Further questions or deliberation or comments of council? Seeing none, we have our motion in seconds, so we're good. Roll call, please. Graham?
Could you please reread the motion, please?
Reread the motion?
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addresses 2059 Hastings Road.
And hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Graham?
Nay.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passes, resolution passes. Okay, and then we will go on to Item C, which is Bill 2018-109.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to telecommunications facilities.
Mr. Mulman?
Thank you. This bill amends the zoning code relating to substantially small wireless facilities and how they're going to be deployed into our community. Last year, the General Assembly passed House Bill 1991, which mandates that cities provide a means for telecommunications companies to deploy what are called small wireless facilities, both in the right-of-way and on private properties. So this bill follows, in large part, a model code that was put forth by the Missouri Municipal League on how to effectively regulate small cell wireless facilities, to the extent that the General Assembly left power to regulate to municipalities. So essentially, what we have are three main changes to the city code. First change makes the deployment of small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way a permitted use. What that means is that telecommunications companies will be allowed to deploy their small cell facilities in the public right-of-way upon application, and meaning a few safety regulations. This also addresses deployment of small cell wireless facilities on private property. Similarly, this deployment of small cell wireless facilities on private property is also a permitted use. This is required under HB 1991. And finally, we also have deployment of small cell wireless facilities, either on private property or in the right-of-way in historic districts, or in single-family residential districts. Deployment of those types of facilities, small cell facilities in the historic districts or in the single-family residence will require that a telecommunications company or facility provider receive a special exception permit through this, from the city council in order to deploy their facilities in the historic districts or the single-family residential districts. This will allow the city to help control the type and look of facilities that are deployed in our historic districts and single-family residential districts, and give the city an opportunity to work with small cell companies, telecommunications companies, to figure out an appropriate approach in deploying these facilities in some of our more sensitive areas. So beyond that, I'm not going to belabor too many, but too much more. But if there are substantial, or any questions that I can help answer, I'd be happy to do that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mulman? Seeing none, we'll follow the same process on the public hearing. And at this time, I will open the public hearing for Bill 2018-109. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the bill? Welcome.
Paul Van Horn, 808 Strasburg Court. I think that we need to have more explanation, more discussion regarding this. Where are we at versus where do we want Jefferson City to be at, now and also in the future? I always use the expression, "If I do this, then what's the result?" Now, the question I have, are we talking about the Internet of Things that we've been hearing a lot about? Is there anyone on the council that has not heard of the Internet of Things? Raise your hand. Okay, I assume that most of you have. Now, the major thing that I can see here is we're talking about 5G technology. And just for clarification, we're talking about the various types of, are we talking about microwave, are we talking about low voltage? Or are we talking about as far as the systems being on light poles? What are we talking about? I don't know. I sent, Sonny, I sent you an email of that, and some of the council members. I don't, I think we need more clarity of this. By the way, I'm in favor of the future of the things-to-be. But I think we do need more clarity from the council. But I do, I think that we need more communication out from the city council, and also for the communication networks that we have within the area. Any questions?
Any questions?
I guess just for clarity's sake, because I think, Paul, you're kind of addressing just the specific technology related to this. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mulman, we can't really debate that at this point. The Missouri Legislature has sort of dictated the process here. We have some oversight about placement of these towers that we're required to come up with, but we can't necessarily have a debate about whether or not we want them in these districts, correct? We have to sort of come up with some regulations to guide this process.
It's a little bit outside of the scope of what is considered in this ordinance. The General Assembly has said you have to allow these in your city. Just for clarification purposes, generally, when people are talking about small cells, they are talking about 5G technology. They're placed lower to the ground and use higher frequencies that are more powerful, but they don't propagate as far. So you need more of the antennas to effectively cover an area. And so they're more powerful, so they provide greater bandwidth and penetrate buildings more. But cities are generally left out of any type of discussion of the type of technology that is being deployed. So in theory, someone could deploy 3G or 4G antennas using this mechanism. It's just that it's scientifically, technically, it wouldn't be very efficient to deploy a 4G antenna that's meant to go 100, 150 feet above the ground, you know, 35 to 50 feet on a light pole.
And I just want, because I think what you were kind of mentioning was the use of it and availability, which is not really the nature of
Our aesthetics, because
The bill before us, and that this bill provides us governance over those aesthetics, but we have to create some mechanism for it to take place. The debate about whether or not you want these sorts of pieces of technology in a community should have been held in the General Assembly a year ago. I just want to be clear, based on your comment and the public listening, that we can't have a debate about, do we want 5G versus 4G?
I'm totally in favor of this, Ken, as far as the actual procedure here, and the actual, what we're looking for. The major thing is, where do we want Jefferson City, the capital of Missouri, to be at and to be viewed upon? And you have enough council member and also staff here. I know that you probably, Rick, you probably discussed this, and Lynn Teck, here's an individual that lives with it daily, and Sonny has to deal with that as well. And the major thing that I've heard is all kinds of wild things coming out. One is, in fact, that there's microwave out. One is, in fact, that this microwave, is that going to impair me? Two is, in fact, is all this going to be aesthetically? And Laura, I'm sure that that's something, aesthetics is very valuable to you. That, I think there's so much information that's out there right now, that we need to get more communication out, Ken, and answer your, to get at what you're talking about, and there's certain framework that's out there. I think that basically, your resolution of what we have here is formidable, because I think we have to think, where do we want to go and how are we going to get there? Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
A second.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Bill 2018-109? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 2018-109.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to telecommunications facilities.
Any further deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have our recommended appointments. Mrs. Stroke will present.
Thank you. The recommendations are as follows. To the Airport Advisory Board, Jonathan Abbott and Dennis Benning; to Board of Adjustment, Jay Seaver and Roy Michael; to the Cultural Arts Commission, Heidi Lucas, Katie Lacy, Holly Stitt, and Melissa Wampler; to the Library Board of Directors, Ruth Canada Painter and Valerie Weber; and to the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee, Patrick Bono and Marty Thruston.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, and we thank all of our volunteers. Item seven, we have no presentations from staff consultants invited guests. Item eight, announcements. We have our four standing committees. You can view their meeting dates and agendas at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Do we have any announcements about committees? All right, and item B, the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial. This will be our bicentennial moment for this meeting, is we're going to talk about the Missouri Bicentennial Quilt. So they're asking every county in the state of Missouri to design a quilt block, and they are going to showcase the history in this quilt, and then they will block an entire quilt based on, I guess, the selection of one quilt block from every county in the state. So this is very exciting. It's going to be produced by the Missouri Star Quilt Company, which is located right here in Missouri. So you might want to let people know. I believe the county is working on that right now. So that's a partnership with the State Historical Society of Missouri. So check out Missouri 2021. If you're interested in how to submit a quilt block and the judging and the rules, Missouri2021.org. And we have item C, the Spring Cleanup Event, Hazardous Waste. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to alert the public that it's time for the bulky item spring pickup. It is free for certain items to be left by the curbside. West of Highway 54, Monday, April 8th, will be serviced. You may drop your items out Sunday, but no later than 5:00 a.m. on Monday. That's when they start picking up. And then the following week, on April 15th, will be the east side of Highway 54. And be sure to get your items out there before 5:00 a.m. on Monday, and if they're out there too far before that, that's a code violation. The household has this drop-off. That's another activity that's ongoing. We have eight scheduled times for that. We're actually taking scheduling reservations online now, a much more efficient way. So folks can go to our webpage, our homepage, there's a link there. There's a whole list of accepted items and not accepted items. I would encourage you, if you're planning on making an arrangement, to drop off your items that you review that list. And then the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, tomorrow night, in this room, at 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., will be an open house regarding our long-range transportation activities. We have looked at four different possible outcomes of the future based on land use and where people decide to develop, and how that would impact our transportation system. And I would encourage you to come. You can also visit that at www.campo2045.com.
Thank you. Could you repeat the dates on the spring cleanup one more time, Sonny?
Sure. The west of Highway 54, that will be Monday, April 8th, and then on east of Highway 54, Monday, April 15th.
Okay. People look forward to that every year. Councilman Schreiber, I believe you have an announcement?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Schofield and Assistant Chief Tim Grace and members of A-Shift for allowing me to spend the day with them on the 7th of this month. And I spent the day, all day, at Station 1, and I can tell you that we're in really good hands. I was very impressed with the cleanliness of the station and the work ethic of firefighters there, and I certainly appreciated the opportunity to spend time with you. So I wish for you to extend that to those individuals that were there that day. I know it was a kind of a difficult day because you were going through training that day, so everybody was kind of being shifted around, but I was very, very happy with how the day went and all the effort put forth by the firefighters. So, thank you very much.
That is great that you participated in that, Councilman Schreiber. Are there any other council announcements this evening? None? Everybody want to take a deep breath and stretch for a minute, because we have a big one now. All right. We are going to talk about Concert Inside the Walls at the Historic Missouri State Penitentiary. So we are excited to announce that this year's entertainment for the Concert Inside the Walls, presented by the Missouri Lottery. So you asked for it, and we got it. We are going to rock the block at the Missouri State Penitentiary with Dennis D. Young and the music of Styx. All right, Dennis D. Young is a founding member of the band Styx. As the band's, you can keep playing it, as the band's lead singer, he wrote and sang many of the band's top hits, including "Lady Babe, Come Sail Away, Too Much Time on My Hands," "The Best of Times," you know, "These are the best of times," come on, y'all. "Mr. Roboto," I think David's going to chime in on that one. Plus, "Come on Carlos and John," Hensley?
Coming to your city.
You're close.
That's not it?
That's not it.
Oh, my bad.
Plus, plus.
That was on the, that was on the B-side.
Classic rock anthems. "Renegade," "Oh Mama, I'm in fear of my life from the long arm of the law." Don't just look at me, sing now, Councilman Hensley. All right. "Sweet Madam Blue," "Rockin' the Paradise, Rockin' the Paradise Tonight," right? So, everybody, "Come Sail Away, Come Sail Away, Come Sail Away With Me." All right, "Come Sail Away With Us" on Saturday, June 1st, at the Historic Missouri State Penitentiary. We'll see everybody at Concert Inside the Walls. So don't forget, this year, it's June 1st. Tickets are on sale now at etix or at concertinsidethewalls.com. So we love this event. It's a great way to showcase our Historic Missouri State Penitentiary. Yes, Councilman Graham?
So is this, no, for the past couple of years, we've had it something during the Fourth of July. So is this taking the place of the Fourth of July event?
What we did this year, it's still part of the Salute to America Foundation event, so it kind of ties in with the July 4th event, but we've moved it to June 1st. We're hoping to avoid the excessive heat that we seem to have had with the past concerts. So, we thought moving it. And then also, we avoid, it was usually the Saturday before July 4th, so this way, we hope to avoid people being on vacation that weekend before that they seem to do. So we are-
Makes sense.
Going to try. We've listened to what people would like to have. We've had also three great years of entertainment between Travis Tritt, Wynonna, and Big &amp; Rich, and they said, let's change up the genre of music. And so we're going to bring in a little bit of rockin' and rollin', 80s rock there, and classic rock. So we're going to do something different. We've listened, and we're going to have fun and rockin' at the prison. So come sail away with us. Anything else? Uh-oh. Yes.
Yeah, Gary, I'm sure you're going to have a dance floor out there, so all council members can dance, right?
Oh, yes. We will be dancin'. So, it will be fun. It's going to be a fun night at the prison. So, yay, come see Styx. All right. And where are we at now? Try to top that, Carolyn. We have Lincoln University Student Representative update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would sing for you all, but my voice has not been cooperating lately.
That's right. Next time.
However, spring break is over. All of last week was spring break. I didn't do nothing but work and sleep, which is normally what I do most of the time, if I'm not in class. However, we have a presidential lecture series coming up on March 21st, and this time around, we're going to have Ms. Donna Brazile come in and just speak to the students in the community. It's going to be really, it's an interesting event to take in, because you get to have a perspective of people who have been in society, in their careers, matured in their careers, seasoned in their careers, and they know what they're talking about. Also, on behalf of the Blue Tigers and the nursing program, we would like to congratulate them, because the nursing program at Lincoln University was ranked third in the state. So we, Blue Tigers, we're doing something amazing. And also, we have a science fair on March 22nd. Lincoln University will be hosting the Jefferson City High Schools over at Jason Gym for a science fair, and most of the science biology majors will be helping as judges and volunteering as well. It's an opportunity to come out and meet, you know, the high school students and see what they have to present. And also, I know this is kind of an early announcement, however, on April 27th, we are going to have the 17th Annual President's Gala. I don't have all the information on the tickets, and I believe Mr. Graham would have all of that information. However, it is an opportunity to come out and raise awareness for student scholarships and support, you know, all of the students that we have here at Lincoln University as our home school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanjaro.
And I think our mayor will be emceeing the event on April 27th.
Yes, I am. I'm very much looking forward to that. It's an honor.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for agreeing to do that.
Yes, happy to do it. I hope to see all of you there.
Yeah.
All right. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. We have nobody signed up this evening. 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 2018-119.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the FY 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a bill that brings forth a request from the Fire Department to utilize funds that were in excess of the projected amount of money collected from the sale of seven fire apparatus. And so we are seeking to replace one of the most-used vehicles in our fleet, which is a smaller vehicle, the command vehicle for the assistant chief. It's a shift, shared vehicle. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, 2018-120.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a sanitary sewer easement over a portion of property addressed as 2511 East Shellridge Road in the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. It's basically a property cleanup issue. The owner noted that recently that there was a sanitary sewer easement running under his house where there's no sewer located. So he'd like to clean up that property description and vacate this easement.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2018-121.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stockman Construction Corporation in the amount of $274,072.17 for the Missouri Boulevard sidewalk project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a contract with Stockman Construction. It's actually a grant project. So the, it's an 80/20 grant project, so the city's share of this project would be just under $55,000 of the total. And that money would come from the city's half-sand capital improvement sales tax under the sidewalk category. And the project would construct sidewalk along Missouri Boulevard from basically the Chipotle restaurant area over to Sub Shop.
Any questions? Okay. 122, Mr. Marash?
May I read it?
Oh, we just did that one. 123, I'm sorry.
Oh, read 122.
Oh, never mind. We're trying to get through the, too quick. Sorry.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for public transit operating assistance.
Now, Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And again, as clerk indicated, operational grant for our transit division. The amount's $11,058. It's administered through MoDoc, and basically helps defer some of our operational costs. It's a 50/50 grant match, and we well exceed our 50% in our contribution to transit.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks. Now, 2018-123.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Greffra?
Thank you. In the past, this is something that's been paid for by the Booster Club. We hired a new skating director in May of 2018, and Carly's been working hard to work on efficiencies within the department. And this is one area that we think that we can approve by us taking the lead and being transparent, consistent with payments. So we're asking for your support.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks. Bills Pending, 2018-107.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by removing parking from the north side of Lee Street between Morrow Drive and High Cliff Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This was a citizen request to our Traffic and Transportation Commission. The street's a 20-foot, 25-foot wide street. Typically, there's only parking on one side of a street that that's that wide. Our standard's 27 feet, so it's a little narrower than that. But currently, there's parking on two sides, and the citizen requested parking be removed on at least one side to allow people to pass in emergency access, things of that nature. It was discussed at the Transportation Traffic Commission. They recommended approval.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation on the bill? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've, this is in Ward 5, and I've taken a look at that street several times, and I know Chief Schofield has as well. And one of the major concerns there is that parking on both sides will not allow fire apparatus to get through the street. So that is a concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other deliberation or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-108.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by removing parking from the west side of Huff Park Road between Cobb Drive and Carroll Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is staff-generated request. Recently, we've noted a lot of parking along the school area there, and so it does conflict with pickup drop-off at school, and also narrows the road where park, two cars can't pass in that area. It's odd that it's parked often full, and it's probably staff at the school parking there when there is a parking lot available to them. And we didn't receive any, we notified the area around this area and didn't receive any comment back, but the, we suggest that the area be enacted as no parking.
Any questions or deliberation? Councilman Schreiber?
Madam Mayor, this is also in Ward 5, and the same concerns exist for the ability of emergency vehicles to get through at the school location there with cars on both sides of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. We've taken up 109, 2018-110.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plot of Capital City High School subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request to approve and accept the final subdivision plot of the Capital City High School subdivision. It is located northeast- Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-111.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing sanitary sewer easements over portions of property located in Capital City High School subdivision.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And, uh, sunny has a drawing up there, highlighted in blue, where the locations that the easement would be vacated and they're no longer needed as sewers in other locations.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-113.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Capital City High School subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this subdivision's located at the corner of Edgewood and Stadium Boulevard. It is approximately three and a half acres. Um, it's a one-lot subdivision, and there's also one reserve tract that Mr. Marash will, will address in the next bill here. Excuse me, Mr. Moulman. Um, it has gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, it was originated by the property owners, and it was recommended unanimously for approval for the council.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation?
I have one question.
Yes.
Uh, what's gonna be, um, is there a certain, several phases to that? Are there gonna be some businesses located at the, off of Edgewood, not off of Edgewood, off of Stadium?
We do not have any, uh, building plans or, or site plans at this point right now. It's just a subdivision plat. Um, I, I, I believe there, uh, I'm not sure if there's anything in the development agreement about what is to be built there.
I've, I've been asked a lot of questions about it, uh, but I didn't have any answers, so.
Right now, it's an issue.
Can, can Paul maybe answer that? Paul, would you mind answering that for us? Just so that I know, and maybe my colleagues, they probably already know.
Welcome.
Very much. Paul Sampson, Central Missouri Professional Services. Um, unfortunately, at this point, I can't give you a specific answer as to what will be there, but it will be a, a single business located on that three and a half acre lot. Uh, they've actually already started, uh, clearing, um, and excavating, I think, last week. And, uh, construction of the building will come this spring. Um, I would anticipate the, the future owner of the property would be able to make an announcement on that fairly soon.
So since you're here, Paul, I'll do another question for you.
Sure.
So there are some, there are some blasting, there's some blasting that's taking place over in that area. Is that due to this, uh, development here, or is that somewhere else?
I'm.
Are there doing any blasting?
There will be blasting on this. I'm not, uh, for sure whether they have started that already.
Okay.
Um, I think they just mobilized on the site, maybe the late, middle to late last week. Um, I'm not sure whether they've actually put off any, uh, um, charges on that site yet or not. I do know, uh, Capital City High School's currently undergoing excavation, and they are doing active blasting.
Maybe that's what it is.
They're getting close to finishing that up. Uh, that's for the, uh, uh, football field and some of the sports facilities. So they are, have been doing work there.
Thank you. So I hope that my constituents are listening, so they can hear that the blasting's coming from the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any further questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-114.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with SNK Real Property Holdings LLC.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This, uh, ordinance approves a development agreement, um, for the property at the corner of Edgewood and Stadium Boulevard. Um, this development agreement constitutes satisfaction of a condition that was placed on the final plat that you just approved. Um, what this does, that, uh, the, uh, property owner agrees to dedicate a tract of land to the city and can then construct a retaining wall along Stadium Boulevard and Edgewood Drive on their property. Uh, the tract of land that will be dedicated to the city, um, is highlighted in blue on the, uh, on the overhead, uh, display there. Um, the intent is that that land will be then used for future intersection improvements. Um, and s, this agreement relieves the property owner of their obligation to build sidewalks on the property in conjunction with development of the property. Rather, the city will construct a sidewalk on cit, on the ci, on the city-controlled property, um, in conjunction with the future intersection, intersection improvements. Um, in the event that the city's future intersection improvements include a roundabout, uh, the future property owner will have a first right to, um, have an opportunity to adopt the interior of the roundabout and then maintain it and improve the interior of the roundabout. Um, that right lasts for one year, um, after the, uh, after the roundabout is, is, uh, completed. Um, I think that is the salient points of the development agreement.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-115.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19, Article 8, the definition of habitual offenders.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, right now, the habitual offender code, uh, allows a person to be fined as a habitual offender if they have three offenses within 365 days or five within 720 days, violations of Chapter 21, Chapter 8, Chapter 5, and some miscellaneous things such as graffiti. It also allows, uh, a, an infraction, but it allows, after a hearing, if we abate, if we order a piece of, uh, of property to have an abatement done, that also counts. We normally go ahead and abate property nuisances. Uh, we offer them a hearing, but we go ahead and abate it if it's severe enough after the 10-day period. We'd like to include that as one of the offenses that accounts towards becoming a habitual offender. Uh, we believe, uh, this will only, uh, affect a small number of, of property owners that are really habitual offenders, that we just haven't been able to, uh, uh, address it with them. Uh, and I'd be glad to any, answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Graham?
Uh, as I'm looking here on Section 1, um, and I'm looking at Number B, says anyone found guilty of a code violation identified, basically, they can be fined and, uh, go to jail for up to 30 days? Was that added, or was this already a part of the definition of habitual offender?
I believe that's the way it currently is. We're not changing anything with the fine. We're just adding one more, uh, item that would, uh, account towards becoming a habitual offender.
And so, I'm reading on here, uh, under D, which says the court should not suspend imposition of sentence nor suspend execution of sentence for any person found guilty of a code violation. So that's already in there?
Uh, yes, sir. The only difference is we're changing, uh, we're adding this section as opposed to subsection A2. Mr. Moulman might go into the details on that.
Yeah, um, so that's clarification of, of the, of the, really, the entire language is that, uh, a person who is, uh, found guilty of the habitual offender section, um, instead of just, instead of just, um, limiting it to A2, it, we thought it more appropriate to identify the entire habitual offender, uh, section as, as, as being, um, counting toward that subsequent violation. Um, so instead of limiting it just to the provisions in A2, it also includes situations where a person is having abatements done by the city after a hearing.
So, but in here, we're, we're telling the judge that they cannot do something.
Correct.
Could cities be doing that?
It's a, it's a limitation on the authority of the municipal judge to intertype certain types of dispositions. Um, the theory is, is that these are people that, um, have not been able to have their property issues addressed through the normal, um, municipal court process, and so it's an exceptional circumstance, and it's a limitation on the judge's ability to impose, um, what are really, um, uh, dispositions that are, um, allow for improvement of behavior. Generally, when someone has, becomes a habitual offender, it's been proven that the regular processes don't work, and so the city has to step up enforcement to ensure that the, uh, property issues that they've been having, um, are, are being addressed. So essentially, under D here, what we are talking about, um, is, this would be, I believe, if I'm reading this correct, this would be a fourth offense before you ever, before you get to, um, Section D. Um, so this is someone that is, within a single year, has had four property offenses, um, relating to the, to the, to their, to their upkeep of their.
For the upgrade of software used in the 911 center at the police department.
Lieutenant Steiferman?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is the upgrade to our CAD dispatching software, uh, which we talked about at the last council meeting, and the funding for this is gonna come out of our allotment of the half-cent sales tax G.
Thank you. Any questions? Any council deliberation? Okay, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. Thank you, Lieutenant Steiferman.
Thank you.
Uh, 2018-117.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adding a new article governing the permitting and care of community cats.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so the community cat ordinance, um, sorry, recognizes, uh, the population of these cats as unowned, um, and it identifies, um, TNR or trap neuter return as a management method that has shown effective to stabilize and reduce these cat numbers in the humane method. it identifies TNR or trap neuter return as a management method that has shown effective to stabilize and reduce these cat numbers in the humane method. So, under this ordinance, caretakers would be responsible for making sure that the cats are caring for, are spayed, neutered, ear tipped, and vaccinated for rabies, the latter of which is of public health significance. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Theo, and I know at the last meeting, I believe, Councilman Mahalovich had asked, and there was no city funds.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, typically, we require a sign-in, but if not, we ask council, and I believe, is it a motion? Remind me, okay, so we need to take up a motion to allow for presentations from the gallery or on this particular bill. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, if you'd like to come forward and state your name?
My name is Eddie Meeks. I'm one of the feeders, and I do TNR on my own, and I've got about sixty, seventy cats of Jeff City, spayed, neutered on my own little dime. I'm more worried about, I'm all for what sounds good on the surface, but I'm more concerned about when are the cats deemed a nuisance? Who deems them a nuisance? Are they going to notify us, feeders and the TNR people, so we can maybe control and maybe keep the euthanization from happening? And, truthfully, the big picture for Jefferson City is we do not have a low-cost spay and neuter program. I'm not asking for the city to put in funds, but we're always going to be battling this until we do that, because what we run into is lower-income people will find a cat, they'll take it in, and then when it becomes of age, it'll start spraying, or it will come into heat, and they set it outside, because they don't have the funds to go get it spayed or neutered. Two cats become thirty-two in three months, sixty-four, one-twenty-five. I'm not trying to, I don't want the cats euthanized, I just want us to try to get it at the bud, not after the fact. That's really my concern, and the two first things, who deems it a nuisance and who determines this? That's really my concerns.
Thank you. I would invite Dr. Theo back up, and if you could answer those questions, and see if there's any other council deliberation.
So, regarding if caretakers are notified if the cats are a nuisance, if they're registered and we know the area, then we can try to get in contact with the caretakers. The shelter in this situation would be a resource to try to diffuse any kind of nuisance behaviors. Having those in the colonies spayed and neutered does diminish nuisance behaviors in general associated with fighting, mating behaviors, and things like that. So, yes, the city would attempt to contact the caretaker so that that could be remedied. And as far as low-cost spay and neuter options, I believe there's one clinic that's offering low-cost spay and neuter in the area. There's also a clinic in Columbia that that's all they do. I believe the CMHS in Columbia also offers low-cost spay and neuter, and Eldon has a low-cost clinic as well.
Okay. Thank you, doctor. Are there any other questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I'm a little bit too concerned about the, what the gentleman said about low-income neighborhoods, and there are some of those in Ward two, and it seems to be this is a Ward two issue as much as anything, and the older homes and the houses that are vacant and abandoned, and so, I need to feel comfortable about how this designation will reduce the number of those cats that are living and kind of rampant within the low-income neighborhoods.
So, it would, you know, require anybody who's taking care of those cats, who identifies as a caretaker, feeding them, providing shelter, those things, they would be required to register with the city and ensure that they are spayed and neutered. So that would be taking advantage of those low-cost spay and neuter options, so that those populations don't continue to increase and be a nuisance. Thank you for your question.
Did you also report that you're seeing success in terms of the numbers of euthanized animals and the number that are actually in these communities?
Correct. So, since Wild Things has started their TNR program, the number of feral cats that have entered the shelter who are ultimately euthanized, two thousand and thirteen, two-hundred-and-twenty-one, and then two thousand and eighteen was fifty-eight. So we have seen a significant positive effect in the shelter. And other communities who have ordinances and embrace TNR have seen positive effects in reduced nuisance calls to animal control, as well as reduced intake of strays, especially kittens, since all of those animals are coming in and being taken care of on taxpayers' dime, seeing reductions in those populations will, eventually, once those populations go down, should see a savings.
Last question. Nothing in this, either directly or indirectly, you see that would result in a greater number of cats being in these neighborhoods?
As far as this goes, no. I would only see the numbers go down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Ward?
Councilman Mahalovich asked a lot of the questions I had, and one that does come to mind that is a concern is the wildlife that it's attracting to our neighborhoods. I witness this on a daily basis, actually, in my neighborhood. I've lost count of the amount of opossums we've caught, and raccoons we've caught, and skunks, and groundhogs, but I know the city used to pick those up for us, but it's my understanding they no longer do so. So with the increased amount of wildlife, perhaps with rabies, what are we going to do to help our citizens in those types of situations?
Sure. So I would see wildlife probably being attracted to areas because of the food that's left out. So, it would be education of those caretakers that there is a nuisance issue, when to put out food, when to take it up, because it shouldn't really be set in overnight when wildlife around. So it could be just that simple, just a management solution in those colonies that are being a nuisance.
Which brings up another question regarding when they register for a permit, are they required any types of training, like on what to look for in a cat that may be unhealthy, that may carry some other types of diseases other than rabies?
Sure.
You know, just, just things for control, you know, what are some steps, and, and again, I understand that about the food, but once you have wildlife in that area, you're not, you're not going to get rid of them unless you get rid of them yourself. They, you're just not, they're there.
Yeah, we don't have, you know, any written SOPs as far as providing training and education to caretakers at this point, but it's an excellent and very important part of ensuring the success of this kind of a program. So as far as wildlife goes, you know, it'd probably be a case-by-case basis. We do not come out and trap wildlife anymore, we refer to a pest control company, or we will rent out a live trap where individuals can come and, you know, use it and then bring it back once they're done, so.
But once they catch it, they have to take care of it themselves.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't do that anymore. Correct.
What if it's noticeable, if you can tell that it's diseased?
If it's diseased, then we will take it in for euthanasia, but it, just because you've got a groundhog under your porch, or a raccoon, you know, getting in your trashcan, that's not something that we would come out and trap and dispose of.
We've actually caught several cats, and we release them, but some of them get really crazy, and I don't know how you could tell if a cat, when it's in that condition, if it's rabid or not, because they're, you know, trapped and scared.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, usually neurological issues is what you're looking at with rabies, they can salivate, you know, there's different things you can look for, but it is difficult to, when they're in a cage and they've got that adrenaline going, to assess their behavior, you know, in that state. So, you know, if there was a concern, then, do you have something to add?
I do think it's a very good program. I just want to ask these questions since it's being brought to us, because it, there is an increase in wildlife because of this program.
And anything that comes up like that, where any of the citizens have a concern, and they don't feel comfortable in releasing the animal on their own, or they've got questions about, you know, they caught a cat instead of a raccoon, and they would like, feel free to give the animal control, animal shelter call.
And they will come out.
They will talk to the person on the phone, and if they don't, if they're not able to alleviate their concerns with a phone call, we will definitely send somebody out to, you know, walk them through that process and take a look at the animal, and make the evaluation ourselves on whether or not they need to contact someone to release that, or it's something that we'll go ahead and take care of for them.
We wouldn't rely on citizens to make a call whether or not an animal is rabid or not.
Well, I tried to convince my nineteen-year-old daughter of that, but she released it anyway because she didn't want it staying in the cage until Dad got home, but it was going crazy. So, I, you know, those are just my concerns, that, you know, we have these community of cats that are now, people are being encouraged to feed, which, you know, I, I'm fine with that, but what, what comes along with those types of...
And I, you know, I agree, and I think, you know, when we talk about the community cats, this is something that people in town are already doing.
I understand.
This just gives the city a way to educate and regulate and try to get them the assistance they need with a little bit of oversight from us to make sure that the feeding of those animals is happening in an appropriate, in an appropriate manner. Like I said, anytime the neighbors or caretakers or anybody's got a concern about an animal control issue, whether it being wildlife or a community cats issue, we welcome that call to the animal shelter to talk with staff down there about the problem, and if need be, we will send an animal control officer out to evaluate that.
And their information will be public, the caretakers, for people to call if they have concerns?
If they have concerns, the, they have concerns about a caretaker, they'll come, the animal control division will handle all of those, so they will have a list of the registered people, so they would be able to contact the animal control, and they will go out and find out if that caretaker is in violation or in compliance, and then any sort of summons, or anything that needs to be issued for non-compliance issues will be handled through the animal control enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or deliberation? Seeing none, roll call please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Bill passes. And I did want to ask if we could just get your name for the record, for, pardon?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item fourteen, nothing on the informal, and fifteen resolutions, we've taken up A and B, so we'll take up Resolution twenty eighteen, thirty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the approval of successor directors to the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This resolution appoints Mike Farmer and Bud Farmer to the Board of Directors for the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District. This is accordance with State City, Community Improvement District law and the development agreement with, with FNF Development regarding Capitol Mall CID.
Any questions, or Brian? Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion and second. Any further discussion or deliberation? Roll call please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Thank you, I didn't catch that. So now, do we need a vote again to take up the substituted bill, or resolution, or...
No, the motion was to approve the substitute, so...
Got it, so we approved it. Okay, we're good. Want to make sure this is official, official, official.
Yes.
So it's still very exciting, yes. Councilman Schreiber.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank our, our community partners on this. It truly was a joint effort, and I specifically want to, want to thank not only you, but Mr. Moulman, for all the time that he spent working on this, and his, his input and guidance has been most valuable to, to the entire committee, and I want to thank the, the members of the council that were on that committee as well, on it, so, thank you all very much, and thank the entire council. This will really do a lot to, to move our community forward on this project.
If I may, really, the, this was the easy part, and there's a lot of, a lot of work to, to go forth. The selection of the developers is going to be a monumental task, and I think that we've all found that the MSP CP group is well-suited for it, and is, is really excited to take up that, the hard part of the project. This was the easy part, and it's, you know, time to move on and really get down to the business that the MSP group was designed to take on.
Thank you, everyone. Item sixteen, yes.
I just wanted to follow up with that. I do think it was a true partnership. I appreciate all the folks sitting around there. Many of us will be approached by folks in the community, you know, talking about it, you know, asking about who might qualify, so, and I think we may want to give some thought to assisting in the process, because this is going to be, as Ryan indicated, a very complicated process moving forward, and the more folks that we have engaged in it, the better it's going to be, so, I appreciate all the work that's been done so far.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. All right. Sixteen, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We have nobody signed up this evening. Item seventeen, is there any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Not even the singing, Dennis D. Young sticks, no discussion? Item eighteen, approval of the March fourth closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Thank you, I didn't catch that. So now, do we need a vote again to take up the substituted bill, or resolution, or...
No, the motion was to approve the substitute, so...
Got it, so we approved it. Okay, we're good. Want to make sure this is official, official, official.
Yes.
So it's still very exciting, yes. Councilman Schreiber.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank our, our community partners on this. It truly was a joint effort, and I specifically want to, want to thank not only you, but Mr. Moulman, for all the time that he spent working on this, and his, his input and guidance has been most valuable to, to the entire committee, and I want to thank the, the members of the council that were on that committee as well, on it, so, thank you all very much, and thank the entire council. This will really do a lot to, to move our community forward on this project.
If I may, really, the, this was the easy part, and there's a lot of, a lot of work to, to go forth. The selection of the developers is going to be a monumental task, and I think that we've all found that the MSP CP group is well-suited for it, and is, is really excited to take up that, the hard part of the project. This was the easy part, and it's, you know, time to move on and really get down to the business that the MSP group was designed to take on.
Thank you, everyone. Item sixteen, yes.
I just wanted to follow up with that. I do think it was a true partnership. I appreciate all the folks sitting around there. Many of us will be approached by folks in the community, you know, talking about it, you know, asking about who might qualify, so, and I think we may want to give some thought to assisting in the process, because this is going to be, as Ryan indicated, a very complicated process moving forward, and the more folks that we have engaged in it, the better it's going to be, so, I appreciate all the work that's been done so far.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. All right. Sixteen, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We have nobody signed up this evening. Item seventeen, is there any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Not even the singing, Dennis D. Young sticks, no discussion? Item eighteen, approval of the March fourth closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.